Good afternoon to everybody. This is the meeting of the planning and zoning commission, and I'm calling this meeting to order. Today is August the 19th of 2021. First item of business is a roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Erasmo Villarreal?
Present.
Jorge Dominguez?
Present.
Rafael Dueñas Sr. Abraham Lugo?
Present.
Johnny M Narváez?
Present.
Raúl Gualde Jr. Larry Dovalina?
Here.
Daniela Salpas?
Here.
Ana Gabriela Villarreal. We do have four.
Thank you. Did anybody call in and ask that they were not going to make the meeting?
Raúl Gualde then.
Raúl Gualde was not going to be able to participate. Okay. All right. So then, can we have a motion to excuse Mr. Gualde?
No move.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
For the record, Mr. Dueñas just arrived.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next item that we have is a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic with which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every right and justice for all.
All right. Next item that we have is a consideration of the approval of the minutes of the special meeting and workshop of July the 29th and of the meeting of August the 5th. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries, thank you. The next item is citizens' comments. Do we have anybody who's signed up right now for citizens' comments?
No, sir.
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, moving to item number six, discussion and possible action. Six A, discussion and possible action regarding the... I'll tell you what I'm going to do. I am going to move item six A and six B to the end of the meeting. I want to conduct the business first and then we'll go into the presentations. Can I have a motion to that effect?
I move.
We have a motion and a second?
Second, Dueñas.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against, thank you. So we're going to move right into the public hearings. We do have a lot of people here and we're going to go ahead and move into the public hearings. Public hearing number one, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately two acres of land, more or less comprised of the entire individual called One Acre Track 8A through 8D. Has conveyed to Alvaro Properties LCD. All right, this is located at 8408 Casa Verde Road and it's going from an R2 multifamily district to a B1. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak of this public hearing presentation will be made by?
I will.
All right.
Is that starting? Just a moment, there's technical difficulties.
Okay.
Good afternoon. The applicant is Sadama Properties LLC owner Marco A. García, Hugo D. García, and Celinda M. García. Applicants, Celinda Vidal-García, representative. It is approximately two acres located at 8408 Casa Verde Road. The zone change request is for an R2 multifamily district to... Pardon me, it's from an R2 to a B1 limited commercial district. The proposed use is commercial and apartments. Forty-two letters were sent out and although it indicates that there was none for against, we have received just here in the last few minutes, eight responses in favor of the proposed This is a location map. This is an aerial view. There it is on Casa Verde, the hatched cross areas. This is a street view. This is the proposed zoning. You see that it has R1 zoning to the... Sort of looks to the north, to the east, to the south, and currently zoned R2. There's a sort of a swath of B3 just about 300 feet south of there. And it is designated low-density residential and staff support. We, although not in conformance with the conference of plans designation of low-density residential, we believe that the proposed zone would serve the neighborhood as a store and provide services for the area of residents. We did identify that the same zone change was requested in 2014 and denied in 2014. Several neighbors did express their opposition at that time. And there was no commercial development on Casa Verde at that time. And since we... Since then, we have seen some commercial development just south of there. So the B3 zonings that we've identified south is offering a mixture of residential and commercial properties. I'm sorry. And then there's the proposed motion, either approval or denial of the proposed zone change for the two-acre tract.
Very good, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the zone change? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Celinda Vidal-García, and I represent my children for the zone change. We've been in Casa Verde for about 30 years, and we just want to do something that will enhance the living of the people around there. Thank you very much.
Your work, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change? Against the zone change? All right, vote of the wishes of the commission.
What is the intended use, do you know?
The intended use?
They mentioned apartments specifically, but they didn't identify what commercial use is, but it would be those which would be allowed in the B1.
I have a question for staff.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Yes, Marco García for the record, one of the owners. It's going to be basically apartments up on top and businesses on the bottom that, you know, that will pertain to the surrounding area. You know, nightclubs or mechanic shops or anything.
How many units of apartments would you estimate, more or less?
Well, we want to just develop on the frontage, so the business would be just along Casa Verde only. I don't know how many.
Not in terms of the traffic already of Casa Verde and then there's already an apartment complex, a large apartment complex there. So I was just going to care as far as how many units they were anticipating.
We have a total of a little over 12 acres, so yeah, it's...
Do you speak Spanish?
Sí.
Tienes un circuito, ¿verdad? Tienes una entrada o dos entradas o una entrada y una salida, ¿verdad?
Tenemos dos entradas.
Sí. Podrías hacer un circuito.
Sí.
Y te construyes.
Sí, este... Todavía no, tenemos un master plan, pero sí para entrar y salir.
Ahorita, en este momento, ya están las dos puertas, las dos entradas, funcionando las dos entradas.
Sí.
Puedo entrar por una y salgo por la izquierda y otra por la derecha.
Pues entra y sale por los dos.
Dos, dos, tres, okay. Con eso es suficiente para mí.
Okay, any other questions from the commission?
So, because he's got 12 acres in the area and you're taking unplatted land and plating only a portion of it, are we going to see at some point in time a master plan that addresses the issues that Commissioner Dueñas is talking about?
If it's unplatted, they would have to come in and plat, that's for sure.
Well, you can tell that it's unplatted, it's in the map and it says unplatted.
They would definitely have to plat before they can pull a building permit.
Yeah. ¿Podríamos pedirnos la foto otra vez?
Por favor.
Okay.
La foto del área? Ah, perdón, esta. Sí, entonces deje.
So I guess the question that is, I think a lot of us are, you know, going through our mind, this property is zoned R2 right now?
Yes.
All 12 acres or just this, these two acres?
No, lo más...
All 12 acres are zoned R2?
Well, actually 15.
Fifteen?
Our neighbors that are at the back, another two and a half.
But the two... Apologies, but the zone change before you is for two acres.
I understand. I was just curious about the rest of the property, whether it was zoned. Okay.
I think the reason he wants to do B1 is because he's saying he's going to do apartments in the back, but he wants to do something commercial in the front.
That's correct.
From what he said.
Well, actually, the frontage, just along the frontage, we want to do commercial. Just the first set of buildings and then apartments on those on top.
Yeah, I understood that. Pretty similar to the concept that's going on on Casa Verde right now.
Yeah, like right in front of the...
Right down the street, yeah.
They're on Springfield. Yeah, something similar to that.
Okay, I move to approve. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All right. Those against, motion carries. Yes, ma'am. Next item is...
It's a commission, don't promote them because then it goes to their heads.
Thank you for the distinction, but I'm not, I'm not concerned.
Next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 2, Block 1865, Eastern Division located at 303 Market Street from R3 to B1. All right.
The applicant in this case is Sylvia Guerra, owner, Rafael Hernandez applicant. It's Lot 2, Block 1865, Eastern Division located at 303 Market Street. The zone change request is from R3 to B1, limited commercial district. The proposed use is commercial. They're proposing a mini grocery store in this case. The 36 letters were sent out, one was received in favor. This is a location map. Here is an aerial view. There's the street view, the little grocery store. There was a little grocery store there previously. This is the zoning map. You'll see that it is located within a swath of... I wish I could see that. It's all R3. It's R3 and then the little pink area to the west is B3. So it looks like it's pretty much all R3 there. The future land use designates this as, it looks like, is that mixed use? Can you see?
Is it?
It's mixed use, let me see. Designates it as high-density residential. And we support the case for the following reasons. Although not in conformance with the conference of plans high-density residential use, the proposed use will repurpose the neighborhood grocery store and provide uses that... Uses serving that neighborhood area. It is also within 300-foot radius of an existing B1 zone.
Okay.
And there's a proposed motion, either approval or denial of the proposed B1.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor of the zone change? A favor? Come up to the front, please.
Buenos tardes.
Buenos tardes.
Yo vivo enfrente.
Okay, ¿qué es su nombre para el archivo?
Mande.
Su nombre.
Rafael Gómez.
Okay, gracias. Okay?
Entonces, yo quiero rentar ese local para que se pueda hacer pequeño negocio. No, un grancho esto y verduras y tal vez una tortillería enfrente, atrás. Es un plan.
Muy bien. Any questions from the commissioners?
Ahorita es la cuadra donde está, creo que es una compostura de automóviles en la esquina y está enfrente de lo que era el Pan American más antes. Está entre Arkansas y el...
Está en la market, no, está en Barichap.
Okay.
La siguiente cuadra.
Barichap.
Sí.
Y el Barichap está enseguida del negocio este o...
No, son una, son como tres casas separadas, papel medio.
Y no hay mucho tráfico. No hay mucho tráfico.
¿En la market? Sí, pasa.
Pues si, porque está...
Hay una columna atrás.
Está de colores allá. So cuando vas a, este, abastecer lo que es, lo que vendes en la tienda, ¿cómo vas a descargar las, los camiones que lleguen?
Pues, este, yo estaba pensando en comprar mi Benz, mi carro. Es una venta porque voy a empezar. Y si los infantes quieren colocar más grande, un rato, una bodega.
Does it comply with parking?
He has very little parking in the front. He would, when he gets to building department to pull permit, he will probably have to limit the interior space because of the limitations on parking.
But there are enough homes within walking distance to be able to...
Yes, exactly.
It's definitely...
Promote an active transportation.
That's correct.
If I may make a comment, Mr. Chairman, real quick. I'm familiar with that area. That building has been there for the last 30 years and the purpose would be and serve for the community and I think it'd be added zone in that area.
Yeah, it's only that something...
It was earlier.
Yeah.
The previous owner passed away and they closed it down, but it was serving the purpose. If he opens back as a grocery store, I think it would be good for the community.
Yeah, it would work. Okay.
Yo veo que estás, no te vayas, por favor. Está sobre la market. Eso puede ser bueno porque se me hace ya una calle comercial, pero ¿qué tienes a los lados? ¿Quiénes son tus vecinos de los lados?
It looks like residences, son casas, ¿verdad?
Son casas.
Son casas.
Y la pregunta que hacía Mr. Dovalina, para descargar y cargar tu producto y la gente que va a comprar, ¿puedes meter a tu propiedad, las Benz, las trocas? ¿No las vas a dejar en la calle, verdad?
No.
Pero esto sí cabe.
Sí, sí cabe.
Vas a construir como una boquita y saque en tres semanas, ingeniero. Okay.
All right, gracias. Public hearing, anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation for the zone change.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those against, motion carries. The next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning Lot 1B, approximately 0.63 acre tract of land. And this was conveyed to Jose Monolochoa in Normochoa. This is located north of US Highway 359 and northwest of Veterans Boulevard. And the request here is zone change from R1 to B4 highway commercial district. All right.
Yes, the applicant in this case is Rodolfo Zapulveda, the owner, and the applicant is Martha García, representing the owner. The property is described as Lot 1B, wish I had it here, Lot 1B, and a 0.63, 0.631 acre tract of land. And that is located north of US Highway 359 and northwest of Veterans Boulevard. And the zone change request is from R1 to B4. The proposed use is commercial. The 13 letters were sent out and none were received either for or against. Okay. And here's the location. See, let me back up, that's on 359. This is an aerial view, kind of hard to see, but the little red crosshatched area. This is a street view. This is the zoning map. Looks like it's all R1 along there, but you'll see an M1 that blew, that's all M1 to the west, no, east, west, west and south of it. It is designated as low-density residential currently, and we support. We support the proposed zone change. The proposed B4 district is, although not in conformance with the low-density residential designation for the comp plan, the proposed use is in conformance with the predominantly predominant uses along State Highway 359, which are mostly commercial and industrial. Also, the neighborhood and surrounding areas currently contain commercial and light industrial uses with which the proposed use would not be out of character. The tracks immediately adjacent to the parcel is zoned R1. However, those were established by annexation in 97. We also support it because we don't anticipate the change to adversely impact the conditions on the surrounding, in the surrounding neighborhood or the surrounding properties. And there's a motion either to approve or deny.
This property is currently unplatted. Unplatted and vacant, right?
Yeah. And so is the property next time.
Okay.
I have a question for staff.
Go ahead.
I have a question for staff. This item came before us on May 19 and was recommended denial and then went before City Council and it was denied zone change. So is it coming back the same way or has something changed or what's the situation there?
I don't believe anything changed. I think we just took a look at it and reformulated our position. Of course, this is a different, you know, different management and the position looks like, you know, after reconsidering the surrounding uses, the placement along a highway before it does not seem like it'd be out of character in this area.
So it's being proposed as a change to what?
B4, highway commercial district.
So let me just ask one question.
Sure.
Does B4 allow junkyards?
I don't think so, but I could look it up. I could look it up for you.
If it does, I'm against it.
Yo soy dueño de la propiedad de esta de aquí.
¿Su nombre, por favor?
Rodolfo Zapulveda.
Okay.
Sí, buenas tardes. Yo soy dueño de la propiedad de esta, ¿verdad? Este no va a ser yonque, ¿verdad? Estamos alrededor de puras, este, comercios. Ya que enfrente está una área de norias y... O sea, yonque no va a ser, ¿verdad? Mi propósito es hacer como una placita, ¿verdad?, chica, ¿verdad?, para, como una tiendita. Eso es lo que quiero hacer, una tienda ahí, ¿verdad? El, este, ahorita está el proceso del plat, sí está, pero por el año pasado pues separó todo por la pandemia, por eso ya no tuvimos la oportunidad de seguir adelante, ¿verdad? Pero ahorita sí. ¿Verdad? No queremos interferir a los vecinos ni nada de eso, ¿verdad? Todo va a estar tranquilo y pues vamos a estar muy separados a todos ahí.
Any other questions?
¿Qué hay al lado tuyo? Estás en...
Al lado mío está una compañía que se llama Black and Wildcat de tractores, ¿verdad? Y enfrente está una de norias o algo así, ¿verdad?
¿Y atrás?
Atrás hay unas casas.
Estás como en un corno, en Ranch Road y la 350.
Así es, sí.
So, Mr. Chairman, that Ranch Road is a private road?
Sí.
So he won't be accessing his property through that road?
Sí, no.
Okay.
No trataría de interferir nada. De hecho, ¿verdad?, yo estoy aplicando para hacer una entrada a entrar en mi propiedad.
Yes.
De hecho, ya apliqué con el estado y está en eso, en el proceso de la, de la entrada a la... Es de la única manera que puede entrar. Porque al lado tengo privado y para el lado no hay nada y sería nomás enfrente.
Thank you, Rob.
Okay, thank you.
It looks like a special use permit would be required. A special use permit would be required and I'm having trouble located on the...
That's fine.
For junkyard, yeah, okay. Any other questions for...
One question for the staff.
Gracias.
En la aplicación tiene el uso que le va a dar. Tenemos eso en la aplicación.
Comercial, es comercial. Comercial.
Nada más.
Es todo lo que...
Ah, es B1, okay.
B4.
Es B4.
B4.
Because it's a highway, highway commercial. Highway commercial, so the highest intense use.
What happens, Mr. Chairman, is that it is on the highway.
Yes.
So it actually will comply for a B4.
Yeah.
I misunderstood, but...
It doesn't identify auto salvage, it's requiring an M1.
M1.
Mm-hmm.
And, okay. I just going to respond to Commissioner Yanez real quick. You mentioned about maquinistas. They would still have to comply with a bunch of requirements being close to the residential. Chances are that they will not be able to have maquinistas there, but it's...
No problem, no problem.
Okay. All right, this is a public hearing.
Anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the zone change, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Adriana Gaona Torres and my sister is Roxana Gaona.
Roxana Gaona.
The reason we're here is we are against it. What they kind of didn't show her well, right next to it is R1, which is our family's property. And the other side of it is also our family. Right behind it, our houses, our houses. So when they say it's B4, I know you all keep saying it's going to be, it's frontage, it's highway. We do understand that. The private road is our road. B4 for me leaves open door for any type of business. And real close to our houses, that's the only concern I have. I understand you all are saying it's a business, but all around it, the U is R1, it's our homes.
Okay. Well, B4s, and you may, you may want to give them a few of the uses that are allowed in a B4, because not everything is allowed in a B4, okay? If the staff can just read off a few things that are allowed there, just so that you can, you know, understand a little bit more of what can be done and what cannot be done.
Yeah, we have, B4 is our most intense commercial district, so you're correct, it would provide for, you know, very intense commercial uses, but it also provides for all the different sorts of commercial uses. So everything from a flower shop, camera shop, to mechanic shop, you know, a lot, pretty much, almost everything, other than manufacturing, warehousing, that sort of thing.
My thing is, ladies and gentlemen, if it was in front of, right next to your house, would you want an auto mechanic click? Would you want... And today it's him that's owner, but if it's allowed B4, he sells off next time, it could be somebody else. We were here a year ago, we did have some issues because it, like I said, it was, it is a private road and they were using that road without permission. So I understand that now they're trying to get a permit to get their own entrance. It's really close to our entrance, really, really close. So it's going to get confused, one or the other. I know eventually we're going to have to put a gate. We have signs that say private road, but again, just think if you were living... But again, just think, if you were living right there, what kind of businesses would you want right next to your house? We have no traffic, we have, it, it's private, it's four houses, four families, we've lived there. I've lived there since I was four years old, I'm not going to say how old I am now, but uh, I, my kids grow, are, are growing up there. Um, we see the difference right now with men working there. Um, I'll be honest, uh, my daughter was walking our dog, because it's always been private, and men were working there and she was getting cat calls, nothing we were ever experienced. I just, I'm very worried, because like I said, this has always been family-owned, we, we could, we were never worried about who was around us, because it's always been our family. I understand that it was sold. I'm not saying, I understand it's a business, but I just wish it could be a little bit more restricted from a B four to something a lot less, so that they don't have that wide range.
We also have the potential for development behind us and next door to us on the back, residential. Um, it's growing in that part of town, we need residential. So we need to keep it residential. Across the highway, places are zoned R one on the map. So, and our side is still R one, we want to keep it R one for the potential of residences, future residences. There's a middle school, elementary schools popping up on that side of town off of Veterans. There's potential there.
May, may I speak?
Yes.
Paul Torres, uh, uh, husband of Adriana Gaona Torres. Uh, one thing that I would state and to highlight in regards to the location. We understand that, and the, the map didn't really showcase that we're about half a mile from the sack. There's also different residential areas, and next to us, and I think one of the agricultures just recently, you approved to turn into a residential.
Yeah.
And I know that behind that private road, there's a couple acres that the family might in the future, there has, there's plants. They think that happened before, and it was debating because what kind of signs, what kind of traffic, and since he had that lot, which lives on an acre, and no entrance, they were trying to use the private roads, you can't. So that was the time they couldn't access it. And now they are already building, there's already construction, they'll build in a road right in front of it. My concern is what kind of throughput traffic I'm going to have there? How is it going to impact the private road just right next to it? There's just one pillar that is private, and then his lands start. So what kind of business, are they going to, people get confused and start going into the private road, or start blocking the private road? So that's the only concern. If it's a B four, like my wife stated, we opened the gate, then maybe two years from now sells it, and not only, not necessarily junkyards or bars, but also, you know, pulgas or whatever. So we want to make sure that if you were to see the picture, when the houses were there, and that take into consideration that whenever you approve, limit of what they can do with that business.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, just to let you know, in two thousand nineteen, staff brought this, uh, to the commission in favor, and it was denied by, by the commission.
Yes, I know, I remember the case. So, I do remember the case.
So the recent, uh, the recent R one that I want to say is to the east, is that the track immediately adjacent to it, or is it the track next to it?
Adjacent to it?
That, that's the R one that we approved, uh, about four or five months ago, correct?
Or, it, it was fairly.
It was an R one with a, with a.
Back with a front.
B one commercial at the front end of the deal, right?
Yeah.
If I may, make a comment, Commissioner. Yes, sir. We, we're, we, this commission guides ourselves by the ordinances and by the, uh, by the position of the lots where they're located. The, uh, I understand Mrs. Gaona's concern, I really do. But also, I see the applicant's kids bringing something that will actually, actually complies with the requirements of the highway frontage. So, that being said, it would be very unfair in my part to deny zone change that, on a property that complies with all the requirements for a zone change. Now, this is my personal opinion, and I'm going to bring it up. You're going to be lucky that he gets a B four, because whatever he builds in there, is going to be segregated, actually limited, because he has to create a buffer between the residential and the B four. So it is to your advantage that he gets a B four. Because whatever is built in there, he has to go through a lot of scrutiny. That was my comment, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, all right. Anybody else?
I'm not denying, and I, I, I agree on certain things. The only concern that I had is, to this point, I don't know what is that they're going to build there. So, so by not knowing, I just want to make sure, I express it, so whenever those limits apply, then I'll be fine. If I know that there were going to be restrictions, then we can go ahead and feel safe.
We, let me, let me answer to that real quick.
Yep. What, I was going to ask, Mr. Sepulveda, ¿qué es lo que vas a hacer ahí?
Es una plaza, una tienda. De hecho, verdad, no va a ser una cantina, verdad, no a nada que, que les estorbe, a ellos, a que les mortifique que va a ser un mal ambiente. Todo es bien, verdad, todo va a estar bien.
I want a question. Es una plaza para tiendas.
Sí, como una estética, verdad, para cortar pelo.
Algo así, que hay varios, ahí hay varios apartamentos o nomás uno?
No, yo creo dos o tres.
Dos o tres.
Sí. Es para cortar pelo, verdad, para hacer faciales y cosas de estos, es lo que.
Can, I want to.
Okay, now.
Can that be downgraded?
Now, just also going to ask that question, give me, give me a second. Para lo que tú quieres hacer.
Uh-huh.
He can go in a B one.
That's great.
Puedes hacer lo que tú quieres hacer en una zona B uno.
Okay.
Y no necesites el B cuatro, si ese, si ese es lo que tú traes en la mente, verdad.
Sí, yo pensaba nomás un B cuatro.
Si es un strip shopping mall así de dos o tres compartimentos.
Una placita, verdad, de local.
Para rentar, verdad, se te puede usar, podemos usar un B one en lugar del B cuatro, y eso pudieras hacer lo que tú quieres hacer, y ya limita los usos que son más pesados en el B cuatro.
De hecho, la ciudad tiene sus restricciones de que no te va a dar el permiso si quiere hacer una cantina, un bar.
Correcto, si es B uno, si es B uno no calificaría eso.
Sí, no, pero no va a hacer eso.
Okay. Entonces tú eres de acuerdo, algo así tú.
No pudiera un B tres, un B dos, para luego que quedaran apartamentos o algo así en caso de que no diera el negocio mío.
Se puede, se puede en B uno.
Con un B uno?
Sí.
Ah, bueno, sabéis.
Nada más quería precisar eso, Chairman.
Sí.
Con el B uno tú puedes hacer tus apartamentos arriba, tu estética abajo.
Ándale.
Nada más quería que.
Vas a tener estética.
Quería preguntarte algo, cuánto, cuántos pies mide de frente tú?
Tiene ciento, ciento treinta y cinco por doscientos cincuenta.
suficientes para entrar.
Sí, muy suficiente, es medio acre.
Salida.
Es medio acre.
Este.
Tiene la salida para darse completamente adentro del terreno, todo.
Digo, tú lo tienes elección, si tú decides quedarte con el B uno, ya lo tienes.
No está viendo.
Pero si quieres, si quieres insistir al B cuatro y ponerlo a votación, este, pues tampoco le da problema.
Porque no.
Si no ganas el B cuatro, el B uno ya lo tienes.
Sí, no, algo grande no quiero poner, es algo pequeño, una estética, faciales, todo eso.
Es que el tamaño ya no es problema, sino los kilos que le vas a poner, que es, ya son los permisos especiales que ellos mismos te van a.
No, y la ciudad te pone las restricciones que no te van a dejar hacer cualquier negocio.
All right, gracias.
Gracias, gracias.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
I have one other comment. Um, piggyback what you said, that they would have to, uh, cover it up, the, like fence it off and protect it.
Oh, yes.
Well, it wasn't being done, if you would go to the property on our Ranch Road, there's a big old gate where, like trucks can go through.
Mm-hmm.
And so how is that going to?
Well, once, once permits get issued for construction.
They have to go.
The permitting requires that any zoning that is a business zone and above the residential zone, there has to be no pick fence seven feet high, okay?
Okay, but when, when he started building the fence, he, he had no permits, uh, they had to go several times, and they put stop building, stop.
Stop work order.
Order, and he kept going, so that's my only concern.
Well, then that, that, that's an issue that the building department will take up with him. Okay, but, but.
That's what our concern.
To build anything else on there, like a structure or anything like that, that requires permits, the city has to approve the construction, they have to approve plans, and they have to go and inspect that everything is done according to the plans and according to the building codes, okay? So that's the process that the city would follow.
I, I understand.
So what we're looking at right now is rather than going to a higher intensive use, lowering the use, but still allowing him to do multiple options, which could be similar to what we just discussed a little while ago, apartments on top, commercial on the bottom, that stuff.
I just wanted to be known that he does have a gate that opens up to our private road, and he does.
If there is a gate there that opens to your private road, and it's your private road, then.
You can lock it.
You can just, you know, put a lock on it or.
Yeah, okay.
Or just fence it or something, you know? Because it's your road, on your property, you can fence anything you want.
Correct, and it just, I just wanted to make, you know, that at times they weren't, he wasn't following the protocol and stuff.
And if that's the case, if, look, it's very simple. If somebody's trespassing onto your private property, then it becomes an issue of, of enforcement of PD.
We, we started with that, that's why we came all this.
That's what that becomes, okay?
So that's my only thing, is we have had issues.
It, it will become an issue of, of PD, okay?
Mr. Chairman, yo quisiera aclarar algo a Mr. Sepulveda. Este, desde mi perspectiva, usted califica para los dos, para el B uno, para el B cuatro.
Sí.
Son sus derechos que usted, son sus derechos que usted tiene, y usted tiene la opción de ponerlos sobre esta mesa.
Sí.
Nada más, nada más quiero que esté consiguiendo sus derechos. Ya usted decide lo que usted mejor cometa.
No, ahorita está bien, verdad, luego uno, y luego ya tengo toda la aplicación del plat, ya nomás ya la estoy siguiendo poco a poco, verdad, con todos los trámites que, que se ocupan.
Yo quería, I wanted to express that in front, like Mr. Gobernina said, we already have a similar, um.
B one.
B one.
Actually, it's a B four.
It's a B four?
On the adjacent property.
Though, that, when that came in, it came in in two separate cases.
Okay.
It was residential in the back and B four in the front.
Ah, it was a B four.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Sí, todos esos apartamentos son comerciales.
Yeah.
Nomás yo soy residencia.
I just wanted to confirm that, because I, I thought it was.
Just want to confirm also, Mr. Sepulveda, so you, for the record, you do understand that that's a private road?
Sí, sí, claro.
So there's no confusion anymore?
No, no, porque antes no, no había entrada para entrar a los míos.
That's all I would, that you understand now, right?
Pero ahora ya, ya voy a hacer, ya entro por los míos, sin molestar a los señores.
Sorry, I, I, I.
All right.
I'm confused, I want a problem. En la agenda yo no veo el B one por ningún lado.
No, no hay, it's B four.
Por eso.
The, the options are, we're asking him.
Tendríamos que contestar.
If he would want a lower zone, or we can, you know, whatever the wishes of the commission would be, if the commission wishes to make a motion on the particular item that is before us, which is B four, we can do that and take a vote.
Okay.
Or if, you know, the applicant, uh, we've had people who spoke for and against the item, is going to be able to what the commission wants to do, the commission has some different leeways that you can go, where you can say, well, we'll take it as is, or we suggest that maybe we downzone it to a B one. Those are options, it's up to the commission, whatever you all want to do.
Mr. Chairman.
Let me finish the public hearing, I guess, and then we'll, I'll entertain a motion, okay?
Thanks.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Mr. Sepulveda. All right, this is, this is a public hearing, and, uh, we've already had people who's for, anybody else who wishes to speak for? And we already had people who spoke against, is there anybody else who wants to speak against? All right, all right, now what are the wishes of the commission?
Mike, I need to, to make a comment before I make a motion.
Go ahead.
If we move for a lower zoning, that's not on the agenda.
The code, the code allows.
We're allowed to downzone.
Downzone.
We're allowed to downzone.
Less intensity.
Then I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve a B one. And, uh, and, and continue with any comments that staff have brought before us.
But we do need action on the B four as well.
Sorry?
We do need action on the B four.
I'll make a motion to deny the B four zone, but grant a B one.
Okay.
Recommend in favor of the B one.
Yes.
Okay.
I have a second.
Your second in the motion, all right? We have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the motion signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. All right, just make sure the applicant understands what just transpired. The next item is amending the zoning ordinance to the city later by authorizing a special use permit for a restaurant serving alcohol on lot one, block one, Royal Oak subdivision, phase one, located at one ten Willow Oak Street.
Apologies. Here we go. The applicant is Lopez and Sons Investment LLC, uh, I'm sorry, the owner. Hilo TCM Inc., DBA, is Taco Mayes, is the applicant, and Fernando Conceco is the representative. The property is described as lot one, block one, Royal Oak subdivision, phase one, located at one ten Willow Oak Street. Uh, the zone change request is for a special use permit, and the proposed use is a restaurant serving alcohol. Uh, eighteen letters were sent out to the surrounding property owners, and none were received either for or against. Here is the location.
Oh, it is.
Here we see the aerial view. Another aerial view. This is a site plan. It is zoned B.
B three.
It is a B three?
Mm-hmm.
B three, uh, along that whole swath, and to the north is R one A and M one south of it. It's designated, uh, neighborhood mixed use on the comprehensive plan, and we support the proposed application. Um, the applicant complies with the Land Development Code's parking requirements, and we go through all of those parking formulas there. Uh, we did a site analysis, again, dealing with all the parking, um, sorry. The proposed location meets the minimum distance requirement of three hundred feet between the proposed use and the nearest residential district, uh, use, park, school, or church as per Land Development Code, section twenty-four ninety-three forty-seven. Um, the approximately over four hundred feet between the proposed use and the nearest residential zone or district. So there is the proposed motion.
Okay. All right. This is a brand new strip shopping mall where this is located. Okay.
It is, it is.
All right, this is a public hearing, anybody wishes to speak in favor, in favor of the special use permit? Yes, sir?
Hola, muchas. Soy Fernando Conceco, representante de Taco Mayes. Principalmente estamos pidiendo permiso para poder vender cerveza y darle más opciones a nuestros clientes en general.
Okay.
Es por eso el permiso.
¿Y el restaurante está abierto?
Eh, no, todavía no está abierto.
Todavía no está abierto.
Estamos en los últimos meses, primeramente Dios, y este, ya cuando aplicándole el permiso fue cuando nos dimos cuenta que tenemos que pedir este permiso especial primero.
Okay, all right, any questions for, for Conceco?
Mr. Chair, just one other thing, they, they did present the letter, um, and in their letter, they're, they're requesting to be open from seven AM to ten PM. And that's, that's what's on the SUP, so they'll be closing at ten PM.
Okay. ¿Va a abrir de siete a diez?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So, so when staff went in there and counted the parking spaces, uh, the corner suite of that particular track is a reception center, which is not yet open, from what I understand.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, will both locations have adequate parking uh, in order to be able to not work against each other? You're, you're saying he needs eight parking spaces. How many parking spaces does the corner property of that, of that track need?
Is it, is, I'm, I'm, it hasn't come forward before, is the, the, is it occupied?
That place is in the corner.
Es una plaza.
It's in the corner.
Not a, un lugar de recepción ahí en la esquina.
Es un salón de fiestas, estancia events.
¿Cuál es?
Es un salón de fiestas, es estancia events.
Uh-huh. ¿Qué tienes, twenty-three spaces, no?
No, tengo ochenta y, y, lo tengo más caballos.
Uh, okay, no.
Espacios para estacionar carros.
Eighty-seven, eighty-seven spaces.
Eighty-seven spaces.
Eighty-seven.
Eighty-seven.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a big strip.
No, no.
Yeah, there'd be.
Place.
Yeah.
They have fifty-five spaces remaining for the, the, all the rest of.
Parte de enfrente también hay atrás del, del edificio.
Just wanted to make sure we had enough parking space there.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody else who wishes to speak in favor of the item, of the special use permit? In favor of the special use permit? Against the special use permit, against the special use permit? All right, what are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve.
You have a motion? And a second? All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Next item is amending the zoning ordinance to the city later by rezoning approximately eight-point-two-zero acres. Uh, this is located at, um, south of Lomas del Sur from R one to R one A, okay?
Okay, the applicant in this case is Laredo Amena Sed Limited, Daniel Wyers is the representative. The property is described as an eight-point-two acre tract located south of Lomas del Sur Boulevard, and the zone change request is from R one to R one A, single-family reduced area district. The proposed use is residential, seven letters were sent out, and none were received either for or against. This is a, uh, the location map. Here we have an aerial view. This is a street view. Uh, this is a zoning map, you'll see that it is zoned predominantly R one to the south with, I think it's R one A, all that to the north and to the east, and then all agricultural to the west. Um, it is designated low-density residential. Uh, that's the comprehensive plan, and staff recommends, uh, support. Sorry, staff supports the proposed application. Um, we support because we've, we believe that it's compatible with the single-family residential uses in the area. It abuts, uh, large areas of R one to the north and to the east, and although not in conformance with the low-density res, the low-density residential designation on the comp plan, um, the proposed use complements the adjacent R one zones. And there is the proposed motion.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor, in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, Frank Estrada with Sherfi Engineering, here to speak in favor of the proposed zone change and answer any questions that you may have.
Anybody on the commission have any questions?
What is the exit, uh, or the entrance of the area? Is it Burge?
It's, uh, Texas Avenue, actually. This will just be an extension of. Northwest.
Texas Avenue.
Texas Drive six four.
Yeah, okay.
Texas Drive.
Texas Drive is on top coming down.
Correct, coming down.
It's coming down.
It's a local collector that comes into the problem.
How wide is it?
Sixty feet right, sixty foot right away.
For the thirty...
No, there's also entrances off, off of Burge. Uh, there's more than one entrance and exit, it, it actually enters into Lomas del Sur subdivision. Except it's not really showing up correctly on, on the map right there.
Does that help?
That helps right there.
Huh? There's at least three, oh.
It's got a connection of Gia on the east side, and then Texas on the west side.
And Bella.
Bella, Burge.
Burge?
Gia.
Correct.
Yeah.
Gia.
That's plenty.
And Texas.
Plenty, right?
Right.
Okay, any other questions for Mr. Estrada? Alright, thank you, Mr. Estrada. Public hearing, anybody else who wishes to speak in favor, in favor? Anybody who wishes to speak against, against the zone change, against the zone change? Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing and support staff recommendation for zone change.
You have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Alright, the next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately two point three four acres. Uh, and this is located, uh, south of U.S. Highway three fifty-nine and west of Las Misiones Boulevard from R one A to R two.
Okay. Uh, this application was initiated by Agaro Management Two LLC. Uh, Portas Nance Engineering is the applicant. Uh, the property is described as a two point three four three acre tract located south of U.S. Highway three fifty-nine and west of Las Misiones Boulevard. The proposed zone change is from R one A, single-family reduced area district, to R two, multifamily, uh, residential district. The, uh, proposed use is residential, and six letters were sent out to the surrounding area. Uh, none were received, either for or against. This is a location map. Here we have an aerial view. Here we have a zoning map, uh, it looks like it's all, almost uniformly R one in that area.
Yes.
I'm sorry? Um, it is, the feature land view shows it as, what is that, high density? Can't see the pink, can you see it? It is medium density.
Medium density.
Medium-density residential, and of course, all of that, uh, is part land to the west. We support the proposed application. Uh, the proposed R two zone is in conformance with the comp plan's designation of, for this area is medium-density residential, and the proposed zone is compatible with the surrounding residential uses in the area. And there is the proposed motion, either approval or denial.
Alright, thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor?
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Wayne Nance with Portas Engineering. Uh, we're, we're in support of this zone change, and we hope to have your support.
Alright. Any questions for Mr. Nance?
One question real quick. Is there gonna be one lot, Mr. Nance?
Yes, correct.
No question, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
It's one lot?
Yeah, it's a two point three four acre, one lot. It's a one lot plot that I'm seeing right now.
Was it just before us, uh, the last meeting?
No.
No, is it?
That's Las Fincas.
Las Fincas.
Yeah. Alright, this is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of this item, in favor of this item? Anybody who wishes to speak against the, uh, zone change, against the zone change? Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
You have a motion and a second, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against, motion carries. Next item, amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning lots seven and eight, block ninety-two Eastern Division, located at seven nineteen Corpus Christi Street, from B one to B three.
Yes.
Um, the applicant, or the applicant, the application was initiated by Patricia A. Barrera. The property is identified as Lot Seven and Eight, Block Ninety-two Eastern Division, located, um, on seven nineteen Corpus Christi Street, and the zone change request is from B one, limited commercial district, to B three, community business district. The proposed use was not specified in the application. Uh, twenty-seven letters were sent out, and none were received either for or against. Here is the location map. Here's an aerial view. Here's a street view. There is the zoning, let's see if I can see the zoning. Zoning is all... Can you see what that is?
B one.
B one, it's all B one.
B one, no?
It's all B one. Looks like it's located in with a, a pretty large swat, a B one with a B four sort of to the north. It's some, looks like B three areas to the south. Uh, and it is designated on the comprehensive plan as... Is that medium density? Yeah, medium density.
Neighborhood mixed use.
Neighborhood mixed use, sorry. Neighborhood mixed use. We support the proposed application. Uh, the proposed B three district is in conformance with the comp plan's designation, which allows all uses except, of course, those M one, M two, B four, all those that are identified. Um, and the proposed only is, is compatible with the commercial uses in the area. That is the proposed motion, either approval or denial.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing, anybody who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, in favor of the zone change? Anybody who wishes to speak against the zone change, against the zone change? Okay? Commission have any questions for staff on this particular item?
No. One, one question, Vanessa.
Mm-hmm.
Why are they changing from a B one to B three? It seems like they already have three.
Again, they did not specify the, you know, specifically what they were intending there.
I propose motion approve.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll say it.
And there's a motion and a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against?
Next.
Motion carries. The next item is amending the zoning ordinance of the city of Laredo by rezoning approximately two point nine four acres. Uh, and this is, um, located east of U.S. Highway eighty-three and south of Oviedo. Oviedo, Obsidian Boulevard from R one and B three to R one A.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, we're gonna, staff is gonna request that this item be tabled?
Staff is requesting a table?
Staff is requesting.
Not the applicant? Is the applicant present?
No, sir.
What's the reason for the tabling from the staff?
Um, there were some issues with notification.
Okay. Alright. Then I need a motion to table this item?
So, a motion to table the item?
You have a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those against, motion carries, thank you. The next item. Review consideration of the following master plans. First one is review consideration of the revision of the Fincas subdivision master plan, the intended residential multifamily open space. Alright?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is BLJ LLC. The engineer of record is Portas Nance Engineering. The proposed use is residential multifamily open space. The zoning for this one thousand seventy-three lot development is R one A. The general location is approximately two hundred twenty-seven acres, located south of State Highway three fifty-nine and east of EG Ranch Road. Aerial view. Street view. The, the proposed revised master plan. Comments from planning? From planning? Fire, water utilities, and traffic safety. Text Department of Transportation, parks and leisure. And the proposed motion.
Alright.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Wayne with Portas Engineering. As you recall, we brought this last time.
Sure.
And, um, I believe that staff met with some, some of the commissioners to clarify some of the access areas. We agree with all the comments, I'll get right to it. We agree with all the comments, but we do feel that we need to clarify item number six, which, uh, discusses additional connection to State Highway three fifty-nine. As we pointed out in the last time, and shown in the aerials, uh, we don't have direct access to three fifty-nine, we, we're, we have, we're one tract. But we do agree in as much as we are providing as many connections through the long-range thoroughfare plan that will eventually connect to three fifty-nine. We're agreeing to a, a traffic impact analysis that will address the existing EG Ranch connectivity and its capacity. And, uh, we extend the same comment to similar comments that traffic and text app have provided. So, we essentially agree with, with those comments, but some of them are a little bit strong, like the second point. We just want to clarify that we're going to provide everything in this master plan that's required, that we can within our boundaries. Any other questions that you all have?
The only question I have is, is on thoroughfare plan. What is the major arterial going back, uh, where this subdivision is? Is it that particular Roger Road extension going east? The Lomas del Sur or, or? Or which one is it?
I can answer that. Uh, it's Los Presidentes, it'll be east-west. It'll be east-west. Or we can go, we can go to the areas.
We're also, uh, we understand that the neighboring landowners are working on coming into, to planning to discuss development. They have not yet, but...
Neighboring, like in which direction?
Both sides, actually. Both sides, uh, east, uh, what do you call that? Okay. East and west. So, the, the major arterial is Los Presidentes Boulevard, that is the one extending east-west?
That is correct.
And that goes back up to, uh, does that tie back up to, to the Loop?
Yes.
Or Cuatro Vientos Road?
Yes.
Cuatro Vientos Road.
The long-range thoroughfare plan has a tie in it.
Alright.
Yes, sir.
So how much of that is already constructed coming off of the Loop?
They're, they, they just...
A third?
Yeah, they're building it, yeah, they're building it right now.
They're building it right now, but what's the length of that, what has been built, does anybody know?
What's the estimated, uh, completion time?
Well, that road is almost...
Well, if you're, if you're, you're looking at, they, what, they did this in two years, what they have now has been about two years? No. Which one?
The construction for...
No, 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 it's been like six months. Yeah, it's less than that.
Well, then, in about six months.
Well, then you're looking at another year and a half?
I guess that's why I'm asking the question, I don't know what the length of that particular develop, road is, that, uh, is being constructed right now, do you know?
No, I don't, uh, I mean, I know where to get the information, I just don't have it in front of me. It's not, it's not on this map.
Does, let me ask you, does anybody in the staff know, does that road go all the way back to which subdivision? Cause it was, it was, it was intention, the intention was to get traffic from Concord Hills out.
That's it.
So that's the end of where the road ends, right now, right? In the Concord Hills? How far is Concord Hills from Las Fincas? More or less?
Concord Hills is two subdivisions west of...
So we're looking at a couple of miles, more or less?
Well, from us, yes. That is correct.
Okay.
Near?
Right.
It's, it's, it's quite, it's, it's not close.
Okay.
As I say, just one step at a time.
That would be the, the other out, major arterial out of this particular area of a thousand lots.
That's correct.
Long-term, long-term.
Long-term.
Yes, sir.
Long-term, because that, on the short-term, it's EG.
Yes, sir.
Simple, yes.
Alright. Anybody else have any questions for the engineer?
So, you have a question on, uh, on number six, it says, provide relief to an additional connection to State Highway three fifty-nine. It's a whole volume of traffic to a B generator. A total build-out. So what is the question that you have, uh, do you want that removed, or?
No, I'm not asking for that to be removed at all, we're embracing all the questions, I just need to clarify that, that it is, uh, our, our...
I...
Getting out to State three fifty-nine, uh, is contingent upon other developments.
By the comments of, uh, of Officer Dominguez, he is requesting a knockout, probably on, uh, on, uh...
Well, right now, right now...
Seven, on seven?
Yeah, phase seven is, is over the threshold for the minimum, uh, number of units, so they will need a second exit, and it should have been our comments, and we're gonna start including, but the only thing that we would need to make sure is that the second exit is a minimum of half the diagonal of the total development from the first.
In our last, eh, eh, at the last meeting, I, I believe that we did, I had a different exhibit, we're going to provide that. That is an understanding. We will provide a, a modified master plan that does show what he's asking for.
Okay. Let me, let me, Mr. Valerina first, go ahead, Gary.
Total build-out, it requires a second exit, but as you phase the development out, it gives you the opportunity to make it happen, and at some point, you have the stroke to stop the development, if in fact they don't reach whatever the threshold is, that you're setting up as a minimum standard.
Right, just in this instance, phase seven, they're already showing us that they're over the thirty lots, yet they don't have it. So they'll have to come up, showing it, but I just want to let, remind them, and I'm sure he knows, but it's just to go on record that they now have to have that minimum separation.
Absolutely.
Correct.
Absolutely. You'll get a revised master.
No, no, no. Hold on. There's a question in back.
Oh, the driver, come on up.
They're gonna do a traffic impact analysis. The unit commissioners? For the record, Danny, you need to see if traffic director? Just want to get some background on this, uh, EG Ranch Road, the one that this subdivision would connect to. Uh, there was a traffic impact analysis done many, many years ago, also the text app and looked at that. All of these developments that are coming into it now were never meant to be or part of that D I A. So we have typical Laredo style, we, we put a road, and we keep adding and adding and adding to it, what happened to Concord Hills. Unfortunately, we're getting a relief many, many years after it was needed. All I'm trying to make, is make sure we don't get the same situation here. We have one road, and we keep adding and adding more subdivisions to it. So we just want to make sure that we can get those cars out for that one traffic scene.
Okay. Let me ask you something, being that you were at Texas, what's the right-of-way on three fifty-nine right now? Do you remember right off?
The width, the top, I'm sorry, probably a hundred and twenty or so.
About a one-twenty?
Yeah.
And right now, we've got five, five lanes, I think, in that area?
Yeah, but they've got, they've got more right-of-way than that, uh, and lanes.
There, there is a project that's gonna widen that to a separated highway. I just don't know if it's from this point that way.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, thank you. Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
All right. All those against? Motion carries. Next item is review and consideration of the J&amp;H Commercial Master Plan. Commercial Park Master Plan. Intent is industrial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, it's Jesus Javier Martinez, the applicant, engineer of record, guerra engineering and surveying. Proposed use is industrial warehousing and the zoning for this 11 lot development. The zoning for this 11 lot development is M1, R1, and a portion is outside the city limits. It is located south of State Highway 359 and east of Las Misiones Boulevard. This is the aerial view. Street view. The proposed master plan. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion. We did receive, the engineer did provide correspondence, which I believe has been distributed that he would not be able to attend, but.
But he's in favor of the comments?
That is, yes, sir.
Now, basically, this item is coming forth just, it's already an area, it's all totally built out.
That is correct.
Just to come into compliance.
Okay.
All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
I'll move to approve subject to the following comments.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
A second, the commission raised. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And for the record, I will abstain from this particular.
Okay.
All right. The next one is review and consideration of the revision of the Central Village subdivision master plan. Intent is residential and commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is L91 VC Properties LLC. The engineer of record is Coa Consulting LLC. The proposed use is residential and commercial. And the zoning for this 160 lot development is B3 and R1A. It is 53-acre tract located south of State Highway 59 and west of Ballbolic Loop. Aerial view. Street view. The revised, or the revised master plan. Comments from planning.
And new TIA.
Fire.
And new, new TIA.
Traffic safety. Parks and leisure, it takes department transportation. And the proposed motion.
All right. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, staff, commissioners. Oscar Castillo from Coa Consulting, representing the developer and here to answer any questions. And we concur with the comments.
All right. Any questions for the engineer and the commission members?
Is that a creek that runs through all of those properties, the shaded area that goes all the way around?
Yes, Mr. Valina, it's a creek. It is a, it's a stream. The environmental, there's an environmental consultant that came and identified it as non-jurisdictional. We went to the Corps of Engineers and they, we have a letter that says that they're not jurisdictional. So we are concordant.
That it's not waters of the US?
It's not waters of the US.
Oscar, the question is on the open space that you have identified here, is that a pipeline or what?
It is a pipeline.
Okay. So then.
Is it active?
It is. So we'll leave the appropriate spacing and everything.
Is it a 50 or 100-foot line? What is that one there? I don't.
It is 25 from the edge on each side.
It's a 50-footer?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. Any other questions?
What will it be there, Mr. Oscar? Will the engineer have a place of commercial or?
In the lot mayor, I think, this. It will be, no, no, it will not be a place of commercial, it will be a, 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 I think it's, let me see, it's going to be, it's proposed to be a kitchen for a known.
It's a restaurant.
No. A kitchen that's going to make food and then distribute it out?
Exactly.
Like for a school district or?
That is correct.
Is that?
That is correct.
Okay. They're moving, they're moving the kitchen.
I understand.
Okay.
I don't know if it's.
That's okay.
That's fine, that's fine, but yeah.
It's fine.
Okay. All right. Okay. What are the wishes of the commission?
I move to approve.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can we take maybe a two-minute break just because Commissioner Dominguez's computer is down and we need to get up and running?
Yes, sir. We'll take a two-minute recess.
So obviously, you want to get.
Okay. We're back. Yeah. We're back from recess. Next item that we have is going to be review and consideration of the Windmill subdivision master plan. Intent is residential and commercial. All right?
This one is.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is L91 VC Properties LLC. The engineer of record is Coa Consulting LLC. The proposed use is residential and commercial. The zoning for this 504 lot development is R1. It is approximately 94 acres located east of Cuatro Vientos Road and south of State Highway 359. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed master plan. Comments from planning. Additional comments from planning. Fire, traffic safety. We do have this comment from fire that was added, but is not in the packet, but has been provided to the engineer. Traffic safety, parks and leisure. And tech department transportation. And the proposed motion.
All right. Okay. Oscar?
Oscar Castillo with Coa Consulting, representing the developer. Hello. Good evening, commissioner, chairman and staff. We concur with the comments and here to answer any questions.
Okay. Oscar, I got a question for you. Everything's designed to exit out on 359, nothing up on Cuatro Vientos. Is that due because of the creeks and all that?
We have four connections. Two that go to, one in Chesapeake, another one in Hewitt, one in 359 and one in Cuatro Vientos.
Okay. I just, I can't really see these things here. Let me see.
I don't know if you want to.
Where, can you point it out up there? Where is that? The one coming up on Cuatro Vientos? I can't.
He's got, that is a creek.
Can you use a pointer up there? Because I can't.
Well, it is here. Connection. Oh. Your finger.
But in the front.
Not the button.
And so you have connectors to disperse traffic both ways, because 359 is being worked on right now and they're using all kinds of mediums on 359 how to make you go. I don't know who came up with that plan, but it's kind of crazy.
Right.
So where exactly are the connectors?
One is on the south end, southwest, right there on Phase 1. That's the connection to Cuatro Vientos.
Okay. I can barely see it, but yeah.
On Phase 2, we have Chesapeake that connects to the east.
You can get in there.
And you're going to, you're going to create some sort of bridge structure or box culvert or how are you going to get?
Some box culverts to unite the, yeah, to go through the creek.
Okay. That's a huge creek. Oh, Oscar, Phase 2.
That is a big creek.
That is a huge creek. Phase 2 has a lot of lots in the waterway there, that creek.
We're preparing a.
Clomer?
Clomer.
Clomer?
Yes.
So you're preparing to channel that somehow to get the water in a more.
Efficiently.
Efficient flow.
Yes.
Okay.
At the same time, we have plenty of space.
You do, I mean, it's huge, so I mean, it's just a matter of channeling it with.
Right.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any other questions for the engineer? All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. The next item, consideration of the following preliminary plaits and preliminary replats. Preliminary consideration of the plat of Las Fincas Phase 3 and the granting of a variance to allow 10-foot front yard setback to lots front in cul-de-sacs, being lots 7 and 8, block 6, lots 7 and 8, block 7, lots 8 and 10. Block 8 and lots 4 and 5, block 9, and lots 2 and 3, block 10. The intent is residential. All right?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Laredo BLJ Land LLC. The engineer of record is Portos Engineering. The zoning, proposed use is residential, the zoning is for this 200 lot owners, R1A. It's located south of State Highway 359 and east of EG Ranch Road. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Engineering. Water utilities and traffic safety. Parks and leisure. And the proposed motion. Okay.
I don't have those figures. I don't have those.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. Wayne as Portos Engineering again. We just have the same clarification on planning, item number two. And we agree with the comments, it's just clarification that the access will do. No, no, I take that back. No, we just completely agree with these comments.
Okay.
That's it.
I have a question for you on the, on the proposal that you're asking for the 10-foot setback on the cul-de-sacs. What are the depth of those lots?
I don't have that right in front of me.
I mean, I'm seeing the plat, but unfortunately, I don't have my reading glasses. I can't see.
No, even the scans, even whenever you're.
I cannot see the dimensions. Can you guys in planning see the dimensions? What are the dimensions on those? Out of curiosity.
That would be. Lot.
Seven and eight on both sides of that cul-de-sac up there by Parcella Court?
I can pull that up. Maybe I do have it here.
Block 6 has them at 5,000, 4,000.
A square foot lots? But what's the depth of them?
One depth.
See if we can pull it up. Did anybody see them on the commission?
We're looking up on our.
Colors, block 3.
The cul-de-sacs.
So if you do a 10-yard, 10-foot setback in the front, then you've got a 10-foot utility easement, or is the 10-foot setback include the utility easement? So you end up with a 10-foot lot front?
Yes, but we're also proposing to always have that same standard plat note about the garages.
Yeah.
The garages being, being held back. It's just so that the building structure itself can approach a little bit further on those shorter cul-de-sac lots, but we recognize that we want to get that parking. And so we'll agree to keep that plat note that puts the garage.
Okay, yeah, well, that's why I was kind of like saying, okay, well, we need to make sure we can get some off-street parking on these things on 10-foot.
We know how important that is.
So you're going, yeah. Okay, so you are going to go ahead and design with that in mind?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So, all right. What are the wishes of the commission?
Some of them is low of 77.
How much is it?
Some of them is low of 77.
There's some that's low of 77?
Yes, sir.
Billable space is pretty much good.
Yeah.
It's good. About 60.
That's why we're asking.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I move to approve.
We have a motion and a second by Daniela. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Those against? Motion carries. The next item is the preliminary consideration of plat of J&amp;H Commercial subdivision. The intent is, okay.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Jesus Javier Martinez. Engineer of record is guerra engineering and surveying. Proposed use is industrial. The zoning for this one lot development is M1 and R1. Approximately 5 and 1/2 acres located south of State Highway 359 and east of Las Misiones Boulevard. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion. And you do have the correspondence on the engineer, he's in agreement with the comments. Yes, sir.
All right. What are the wishes of the commission?
I'll move to approve subject to the following comments.
Motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion carries. The next item is the preliminary consideration of the plat of Central Village subdivision Phase 1. The intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is L91 VC Properties LLC. The engineer of record is Coa Consulting LLC. Proposed use is commercial and the zoning for this one lot development is B3 and R1A. Approximately 11 acres located south of US Highway 59 and west of Ballbolic Loop. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning and engineering. Traffic safety. Parks and traffic safety. Tech Department of Transportation, utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
All right.
Chairman, commissioners, staff, Oscar Castillo with Coa Consulting. We concur with the comments and he representing the client. We're here to answer any questions.
Any questions for the engineer? If not, what are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Preliminary consideration of the plat of the Windmill subdivision Phase 1. Intent is residential and commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is L91 VC Properties LLC. Engineer of record is Coa Consulting LLC. The proposed use is residential commercial and the zoning for this 90 lot owner is R1. Approximately 22 acres located east of Cuatro Vientos Road and Loop 20 and south of State Highway 359. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. Additional comments from planning. Traffic safety. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
All right. Yes, sir.
He representing the client, commissioners, chairman and staff and Oscar Castillo for the record, please. We concur with the comments.
Okay. Any questions for the engineer? What are the wishes of the commission?
I'll move to approve subject to the following comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Right.
Against? Motion carries. The next item, preliminary consideration of the replat of Lot 14, Block 11, Las Misiones Of lot fourteen, block eleven, Las Misiónes Subdivision, unit three into lot fourteen A, block eleven, Las Misiónes Subdivision, unit three. The intent is to abandon a ten foot retention easement or what is that? D E, dedicated fifteen foot utility easement and a fifteen foot, um.
Drainage easement.
Drainage easement, I'm sorry, not detention drainage. Alright?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Jesús Javier Martinez. The engineer of record is Gara Engineering and Surveying. The proposed use again to abandon the ten foot drainage easement, dedicate the fifteen foot utility easement and fifteen foot drainage easement. The zoning for this one lot development is R one A. Approximately point one two acres located south of State Highway fifty-nine and east of Bartolomé Lane. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning. And the proposed motion. And again, we did receive correspondence.
He's in agreement with the comments.
Yes, sir.
Alright, what are the wishes of the commission?
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item is preliminary consideration of the plat of Longoria. Plat lots one and two, block one, the intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is Jesús Longoria and Marta Iramírez. The engineer of record is T E C Engineering Engineers and Consultants. The proposed use is commercial and the zoning for this two lot development is B one. It's approximately point seven acres located south of Shiloh Drive and west of Snow Falls Drive. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning, engineering and traffic safety. Parks and leisure, utility coordination. Additional comments for utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Good evening, gentlemen. Rodolfo Torres from Tech Engineers, uh, represent the owner. And we agree with the comments except for we need a clarification on the parks and leisure comment. Uh, this is a commercial track and I don't think the, uh, park ordinance applies on this case.
So that we just, uh, well, for the record, we just wanted some clarification or parks wanted some clarification that this would not in any way be used as multifamily.
Yeah, okay.
So, so I guess that could be clarified now for the record.
The owner is here and you can clarify.
Beautiful. Very good.
Good evening, commission. Uh, now the intent of the properties were commercial use only.
Okay, state your name for the record, please.
Jesús Longoria.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, any questions for the engineer or the owner? If not, what are the wishes?
I'll move to approve subject to the following comments.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those against? Motion carries. Next item is the. Preliminary consideration of the plat of D and J Alexander, Phase fifteen, Alexander Crossing Plaza, lot six, block four, the intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is D and J Alexander Investments LLC. The engineer of record is Top Site Civil Group LLC. The proposed use is commercial and the zoning for this one lot development is B three. Approximately one point three five acres approximately located south of east corner of University Boulevard and Bartlett Avenue. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning and traffic safety. And the proposed motion.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission staff. Ricardo Villarreal with Top Site Civil Group. We concur with all comments.
Thank you. What are the wishes of the commission?
Move to approve.
You have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Next item consideration of the plat of Alexander Commercial Subdivision. Phase thirteen. The intent is commercial.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, the applicant is D and J Alexander Investments LLC. The engineer of record is Top Site Civil Group LLC. The proposed use is commercial and the zoning for this one lot development is B three. Two point sixty-six acres located northeast corner of University Boulevard and Bartlett Avenue. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning and traffic safety. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission staff, Ricardo Villarreal with Top Site. Um, just to clarify one comment, plan comment number three. We will be submitting a driveway plan and traffic. So, um, it might adjust off of that property line off of that shared driveway, but it'll get approved at one stop shop.
Alright.
Okay.
Chairman.
Yes.
G and H. Es en la misma, nada más es one lot, lot one y la otra es. Lot six. Para juntarlos. Motion two.
You want to do what? G and H?
G and H, AC one.
They're all in the same, it's the same deal.
They're the same. Two separate plats. Lot six. Two separate plats. If you don't mind if we could take them one by one?
Yeah.
Because they're two separate.
Let, they're separate.
We just approved the.
We just approved the first one, yeah.
Yeah, we just, we already approved.
We've already approved, uh.
G.
G.
Yeah.
G, we're on H.
Yeah.
Motion to approve.
Okay, and we have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. So then, um, let's take spirit. Now, we're going to final plats?
Mr. Chairman, we do have.
Well, the last one. Preliminary consideration of Alexander Commercial Crossing Phase thirteen, intent is commercial. I think you all pretty much.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. For the record, D and J Alexander Development LLC. The engineer of record is Eduardo Lujierres. Proposed use is commercial and the zoning for this one lot development is B three. Is eight point nine five acres located south of Delmar Boulevard and west of Baller Lake Loop. Aerial view. Street view. The proposed plat. Comments from planning, engineering, traffic safety. Additional comments for traffic safety and text department transportation. Utility coordination. And the proposed motion. And you have before you some correspondence as well from the engineer.
Yeah, he's, 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 he's in agreement with the comments. Alright, any, a motion to, uh, from the commission? The engineer is, is, uh, sent in a, a written request that he's in agreement with the comments.
He is?
Yes.
Move to approve subject to the conditions.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those against? Motion carries. Alright, we're going into final plats and final replats. Can we have a motion to take all of item ten, ten A and ten B together?
Yes, come on.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Alright, can we have a motion for approval?
So move.
We have a motion and a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Now we go back to the beginning of the agenda. And we're gonna go and take, uh, let me see here. Okay. We're going back to the next item is gonna be discussion and possible action regarding the twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-six capital improvements plan.
Good evening, uh, Chairman. Gilberto Sanchez, Budget Director. For the record. Nice to see some familiar faces. Mr. Dobalina, thanks for my passport seventeen years ago.
I don't know if you got older or I got older.
I do need some therapy now, but, uh. I need a new passport also, Mr. Dobalina. I don't know if you can help. Okay, capital improvement program for this, uh, for the city. As you all know, this is a five-year program. Gets, uh, gets, uh, adopted every, every year and gets, uh, we get, uh, um, we, uh. We change it as we move along every year. It gets, uh, we implement it and we, uh, we make changes. And we add things as we move, uh, through every council meeting and every year we keep adopting things new to it. So, uh, this year, this five-year, five-year plan consists of, uh, almost one point five billion dollar, uh, plan. Uh, obviously not all of it, it's, it's funded. Uh, this is just the plan for the next five years for the city. Uh, for this year, we have, uh, four hundred and seventy-four point eight million, uh, million dollars. Uh, and I'll go in a, a little bit more in the, in detail in the next slides. Uh, and you can see in twenty-three, six hundred and twenty-five, uh, twenty-four, a hundred and nine, twenty-five, a hundred and eighty-five. And twenty-six, ninety-four million dollars. Uh, there are several different, uh, funding sources.
Is there any way we can get this on our screens? Cause I mean, I'm trying to look at those numbers and I can't.
We, we haven't seen them at all and, and it's being described to us, but.
But is there any way we can see them here? Can you guys?
Supposed to be able to by pressing the button, but it's not working.
Which one?
The B?
Toggle switch under, under the.
The B?
Which one?
I'll try it.
He said B.
What happens? How about that? Did that do anything? Turn it off. Wonderful.
It's your screen. Oh, there it is.
Eh, ya nos apagas de esos. Ah, ya, yeah.
Did I do that?
Really?
No, no, apagas de esos.
Meeting.
Meeting has adjourned.
I'm just the numbers guy. I don't know what.
I don't.
This is Orly's house. That's what he told me when I got here, so blame, blame Orly.
You know, just sit there quietly. Stand there quietly.
It says button B, podium, PC, presentations, videos, et cetera.
Well, I pressed mine.
Ya lo vieron?
And then it turns off.
It's right there, so I don't know if you can see.
It's, it's working, but I, B is going to the, to whatever's feeding off of the meeting adjourned, so we need, we, it's not going, well, now it's not working at all. Earlier it was toggling, now it's not.
Is there money in the budget to fix this?
Doesn't work fine, man.
No. And it's not, it's not in the packet, right?
Irritation noise, the full, the full boot, uh, what they have.
Do you have it? It does do it here, you know why?
Hey, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna get.
Let me just ask a question.
So it does, when I do stuff, it does it, but.
See it over there, I can't see.
I don't think it.
Based, based on what you said.
It's put it there, but it doesn't.
You.
Tried it from back there.
Yeah.
This is a, this is a regurgitation of whatever you had last year? Uh. Cause you said you made no changes and.
We, we have made some changes. We, uh, we have a five-year plan and we have already.
If you go, if you go to the planning and zoning, um, agenda, then you put click to view meeting. Y sale en la, en la pantalla.
I'm streaming it. I'm looking at the streamed version and it's so blurry. I can't see a thing.
I got it.
Where is it?
Right here.
Ahí está.
I fucking don't read. It's blurred.
It's a little bit blurry, but I think it's because.
Uh, it, it is blurred.
Mine is super blurry. That's why I didn't even suggest it.
We don't even make.
No. Anyway.
Alright.
So, so you, you basically did nothing?
Yeah, we, we did, uh, we approved a, a C I P based on, uh, on, uh, projects that council requested. And we, uh, we have, uh, we have several slides that, uh, that will show you what, uh, some of the biggest projects that council, council requested. And some of the projects that, uh, departments like utilities which have the most, uh, the biggest ones, the biggest projects. And, uh, utilities, utilities will be one of the biggest ones that have the, the most, uh, projects here.
So this has already been approved by council?
Oh, not yet. We will, we will go in September on the late, on the last meeting of September, we will, we will have it there on the agenda.
At, at one of our, uh, previous meetings, uh, in discussing probably one of the projects that is here is, is Carlton Road here? Where you have nineteen million or twenty million dollars?
I believe there's, um. Not sure about it. It's Carlton Road, yeah. No, no, it's not there. Uh.
Huh?
It's not there, Carlton Road.
It's not there?
It's not there, um.
No, but the overpass.
So is it funded?
The overpass was.
It, it is, it is funded.
It is funded.
It is funded. Carlton is funded. Was it one of the old earmarks?
So why would it not be here funded?
If it's old and it's already funded, it's, it's on paternity and it's funded.
Five in earmark.
But you haven't done the project.
That's true. We're still working on it, so I don't, I don't know why.
Improvement program.
Yeah, we need to put it on there. And we were talking about taking that money and moving it.
Yes, because we, we, we had a suggestion that that project be replaced by a river road.
Yeah.
In order to alleviate traffic, particularly along Mines Row.
Yeah, and, and we can do that. Uh, well, I mean, if you all give us that directive, we can, we can always advise.
The only thing that with that one is, I'm, I'm sure you, you well remember it. It's an earmark. And when we did CPNL Road and we wanted to cancel that one, number one, they wanted us to return the money if we didn't get to a sort of a logical conclusion in the project. Like where we had a product that we could present because it's, you know, money from the government. And also, um, they said that we would have to give the money back and then ask for them to reallocate it to us with, within the earmark. It wasn't, we weren't allowed the discretion to move the money to something else.
But, but if I remember correctly, because that allocation in earmark was done during our administration.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, that did include a piece of a river road. And we did not have the complete alignment on how that river road would go by what you're referring to now as CPNL Road.
Mm-hmm.
Because we were trying to get from, from Carlton Road all the way into the River Oaks subdivision.
Carlton was.
And that was the original intent and design of that road. Although we had not identified right of ways or anything like that, the intent was to connect that area with actually Fletcher Lane.
Yeah, it was part of the, the West Laredo multimodal corridor, which was CPNL, Fletcher, Las Cruces, a, a realignment and the Carlton. Uh, the Carlton overpass. So, yeah, it was all of that, but the, the, the legislation that allocated most of the funds that are now inside of Carlton. Actually identify Carlton is the project that those monies are allocated to.
Yeah.
Y no se puede cambiar.
So those were future monies?
The, they were the monies that were in those earmarks that they're listed in the actual like law, the, um.
But it does include what Larry's talking about, the river road?
No. In West Laredo, no. The only three projects were Fletcher, uh, Las Cruces, CPNL and Carlton.
CPNL?
It is the same road.
Okay, CPNL's a river road. That's the beginning.
CPNL was, uh, supposed to connect right, I, I guess at the, eh, end of CPNL. It would go through the back, cross the Union Pacific, uh.
Fletcher Lane.
Lane and punch out to Fletcher.
Go all the way up to Fletcher Lane if I remember correctly.
Yeah, punch out to Fletcher.
Yeah, the right, the right of way of, uh, of U P sits alongside Fletcher Lane.
That's right.
Because that's when we were trying to build a railroad back there.
Yeah.
Which is now gone, believe it or not. But anyway, the money's earmarked from the Carlton. It doesn't mean that we can't start the Carlton project, but start it back over there.
So, so do you believe?
We've already been working on Carlton for fifteen years.
But do you believe that the nineteen million is gonna be spent completely on Carlton?
Uh, the la, I mean, the last time I checked on cost estimates.
It's more than that because of the, of the great separations and like a thirty, how much money do you have right now?
I mean, a while back it was usually rule of thumb was about twenty for great separations, depending on where we are. I mean, right now, things.
The last number I remember was like thirty-four million for that.
Yeah, they went really high and then we had a downturn and everything went really low. So, I mean, right now, things to be, seem to be.
Is there any way you can access your, right now and find out how much money is available?
Uh.
When you access your.
It was approximately for Carlton about twenty, twenty. And I think last time I remember was Fletcher was like three point five to five million.
The realignment of Fletcher.
So do you have money funded for Fletcher and for, um.
For the realignment of Fletcher, yeah. They're working on that project.
Why would you want to realign Fletcher? Because there's no connection now.
Yeah, a million years ago, when that project was envisioned.
That, that's, that's the whole point that, that we've waited so long to do these things.
That is not necessary.
And the traffic and the industrial activity has moved for, north.
Yeah.
Right.
The, the big thing that sort of, uh, pushed the project to obsolescence was the grade, the grade separation over the railroad. That was the big thing they were trying to avoid is having those trucks get stuck at that railroad crossing over there right at the Delmar Mines. So once Tex- not built that, you know, it, it changed all the numbers, but once it was built, those, those monies were already allocated via earmark. So when we, when we stopped CPNL, um, they did all that research to see if we could, you know, reallocate those monies and we were told no.
So do you need legislation in order to, to make the change? You're saying you, I'm, I'm, I'm surprised you still have the money because you didn't use it.
We're, they're working on it. They haven't stopped working on it. They're still working on it. I mean, they're hopefully much closer than not.
You mean doing acquisition of properties or what?
Yeah. Yes. I mean, there was, I mean, I could give you a brief history of it, but there was a lot of delays with those projects. We had to redesign because somebody didn't wanna, they wanted an exorbitant amount of money for their warehouse. So they had to push the, the bridge over. Um, we had up to ninety percent, um, designs. So I mean, imagine we had already gone through Tex- thought, environmental, all of that. And we had to push it over, so we had to start again with those designs. Every five years or so, our environmental, um, rules change. So we've had those issues. I mean, there was a lot of right of way problems. Fletcher and CPNL, we had actually the project stopped. We had one councilman came in and said that they didn't want the project. So we had to stop the project and then another councilman came in and said he did, so we had to restart.
I remember that council.
Yeah? So it's been a, it's been a long road.
Point three million dollars.
Carlton has got fifteen point three million for the overpass?
Yeah, it's from twenty, twenty ten, twenty fourteen C I P. Uh, it's, uh, TX dot funded project.
What's it saying?
TX dot funded. TX dot.
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what.
Fifty point three million dollars.
You're not gonna, you're, at, at today's prices, you don't have enough money. You're, at, at today's prices, you don't have enough money.
You don't have money to do that project, so I guess the recommendation that I would suggest is that you go back to the funding source and say, we don't have enough money to complete this project now, but if we can use that money to just do a river road to relieve traffic off of the Mines Road, the concept was way back to just do a, a road that would connect uh, obviously to Fletchall Lane, to Riverside Road, I don't remember what. Riverbank, Riverbank.
Riverbank.
To Riverbank and then take it further and go all the way up to the Muller subdivision.
Indian Sunset.
Passed it, passed it. So that you could have a parallel reliever for passenger vehicles only to allow them to get off of the Mines Road and just have this other way in and out. For emergency vehicles also, because that was another big issue we had, response time with ambulances and fire.
I made a note here to get with the city and the engineer to give us an update so that I could get it out to you all, so you can see what, what's happening with that, with Carlton Road.
And we can definitely.
Well, because there's two things that, that really come into play now, so much time has gone by that the Carlton Road overpasses.
Yeah, no, no, it is.
Not needed, neither is realignment of Fletchall Lane, it's not needed either. So those are projects that you're gonna continue to try to do for nothing.
Maybe purchasing right away or something, I mean, you know, I don't know where.
The right of ways have been done. All the right of way for that, Carlton has been done. Okay, the only thing that we may need is the right of way that's going all the way up to Fletchall Lane, I don't know if that's been acquired or not. At one time, we, I don't even think we, CPNL was willing to donate it, but I don't know what, if we ever.
I'm sorry, they've stopped CPNL, so that's, that's no longer being done. They, that project was, was terminated.
Who stopped?
That, uh, it was the railroad, they wouldn't allow the crossing because the railroad is right behind Fletchall.
Right in the front.
So they wouldn't allow it, so we, that's, that project was stopped. So it's only right now.
Allow, what kind of a crossing?
They wouldn't allow us to, to.
At grade.
But that's a street, that's a city street that's at grade right now that you can access.
No, the, I guess the, the preferred design was gonna go behind and go right through sort of the middle of Fletchall Lane, right? It's not, not uh, at the beginning like at Mines Road, like in the middle, it'll punch through like between those warehouses. So, and behind those warehouses is that, that Union Pacific, I think it's the Union Pacific.
Yes, it, it has, it has right of way back to thirty-five.
No, that they had already had, I think their presidential permit, if I remember.
They do.
For that, for that location.
But since they didn't get the concession on the Mexican side, that permit is not gonna be utilized.
But they were the big, that was the big stumbling block for why that.
I think what we need to do is we need to get somebody to come back and look at the prior plans. Uh, you know, this commission, if you all wish that, and let's take a look at those prior plans. I think one of the biggest pushes that we need to do is, we seem to be putting Band-Aids on the Mines Road, get double turns here, it could by end, it's the same thing. You're not adding more capacity, you're adding a hell, you've got more than two thousand acres that are still gonna be developed industrial. And it's all gonna come back to the Mines Road, so you need to take traffic off of the Mines Road by taking at least passenger vehicles and off of that and just bring it up a little bit more for commercial traffic. That's what we need to work on, I, I don't, you know, I, I, we need to do something, you know? Either that or build an expressway over the Mines Road for just trucks. We need to do something here, I mean, and that's a challenge to you guys. Because we've been talking about trying to reduce traffic on the Mines Road, but yet there's properties that are still coming in for development, you know, that are industrial or manufacturing. And from what I'm hearing right now, there's a big need for a lot of warehousing space. And the acreage is really north of the Mines Road, north northwest. And the crossing is still World Trade Bridge, so somehow you gotta get to the World Trade Bridge. And that's whether we use the existing or you build a brand new one on top of the existing to get your traffic in and out. But somebody needs to start working on some plans there to, I mean, I don't see our city at, addressing being that we're the largest inland port supposedly, I don't see anybody actively working to come up with a solution, that's a viable solution based on your land use that is to the north northwest, which is most of it is manufacturing and industrial. And if we're gonna continue going this port, well, we better figure out a way to get the trucks in and out.
Well, Tex- Doc, Tex- Doc did do some studies on Mines Road and they did propose short term, medium term, long term, and I think the R M A is also working on a study that will encompass sort of that whole quarter up to, what is it, two forty-four? So it'll be eighty-three to Mines Road up to two forty-four, so they're also working on that study, that it's called the.
Okay, but.
You mean two fifty-five?
Two fifty-five.
Two fifty-five, I'm sorry.
But the issue really comes back to the same thing, your port of entry is your World Trade Bridge. And so, really, that's gotta be your focal point, how do I get traffic in and out, World Trade Bridge, truck traffic? I mean, you could do all these other parallels, you got this uh, we got uh, the two projects up there, cause by Seals.
Baezillos and.
And the other one, and all you're doing with Baezillos is you're adding queuing, that's all you're doing, you're still coming back into the same area. So, I mean, we need to think out of the box, somebody needs to really start thinking on how to redo things and not just that these Band-Aids, well, let's just queue more traffic on Baezillos, let's put them on a char. A char is still gonna have to come back through thirty-five back down the same way. All you're doing is another loop, we need to figure out a more viable solution long term for future growth, to continue this project growth.
And that's, and that's uh, one of the big charges from the N P O. Uh, they're working on, you know, of course, long term transportation planning with all of us, you know, the city, the county, the, you know, all those stakeholders.
We need to make sure we get a priority.
The char Ruthinger on your C I P?
Yes, sir.
Baezillos?
Is it, is it fully funded?
Uh, charity here, it's uh, I believe there's a, there's a portion of it that is not funded yet.
What, what portion is not funded?
Well, let's go with Baezillos first, because it's a closer road that is supposedly, we've got an allocation supposedly coming on, how much, how much are you short on Baezillos?
Baezillo.
Trece mi, trece mil. Fifteen seventeen.
Thirteen, seventeen million or something? I think it was seventeen million that I remembered. How much?
Seventeen million.
I remember, I think it was seventeen million we were short.
And that's the thing, we have Carlton and he said Tex- Doc has funded for eighteen million. Why don't we take those eighteen, I, I know you told us and they're specified for that particular place. But why, it, they haven't done it, they have it there.
How much?
Why don't they change it to something?
We would love to, the, the only thing is that, that's what happens with earmarks, it's for that.
We're short five million dollars.
Five million dollars.
And.
Which project?
Okay, so what is the proposal on this particular capital improvements for Baezillos right now, just? So are you, is a five million in the, in this particular allocation right now or no?
Five million dollars, they're unfunded right now and that, that particular category right now, everything is uh, funded to uh, prior years of fund, uh, funding.
So it's been pushed to what year, the five million?
Uh, the five million will be pushed for next year, to find the funding for next year.
Was it in this, in this fiscal years, uh, C I P for funding?
Uh, it, it is on the unfunded category, so come next year, we'll push it for next year and try to find money for next year.
But the thing is, we've been working on Baezillos for more than ten years. And we're still haven't able to get the thing done. And the traffic continues to grow, so we need to really make some hard calls here on, on what gets funded and, and, and stuff, I, I. I'm not sure, I know that you're presenting, you know, uh, the proposed funding for this coming year. You've got, if I saw it correctly, forty-eight million dollars for streets?
That is correct.
If we got forty-eight million dollars, that is, verdad, that's what it is, some forty-eight million something proposed for streets? Why don't we?
Talk to your council.
Staff also needs to do this, you know, staff needs to tell council, hey guys, you know, we, we gotta do some things here that make sense.
Baezillo, ahorita me acaban de, de informar que el requerimiento de poner esos cinco millones eran en el veintitrés, dos mil veintitrés.
Tí, pero ese dinero tienes tú, per, perdón, ya, ya, ya termino. Ese dinero que te estamos diciendo de Carlton y de Fletchall Lane es dinero de la ciudad.
No.
No es del, del Tex- Doc?
Ya dijeron que es un earmark.
No, yo recuerdo, me lo puedo, lo puedo ver, porque yo recuerdo que el N P O decía dinero Siri esos dos rincones. Fletchall Lane y Carlton, lo podía llover para quitarme mi duda.
Nosotros conseguimos ese dinero de Kate Bailey Hutchinson en el dos mil cuatro.
Entonces, mister Dovalina, a lo mejor yo sigo confundido, me gustaría verlo porque ahí decía Siri. O lo vi mal el rincón.
Era, era dinero federal.
Lo tienes ahí?
And, and when it's an earmark, you have to use it for that specific reason, like. And, and also if you don't use it in a certain period of time, you lose it. So, what I'm, what we're trying to say is, we need to get on the ball and put um, an effort or mixed match, what we can, what we can move so we can get projects like Baezillo that will help a lot for, for the area of La Bota and um, normal, normal traffic, not, not that much mm, maybe the tractors or, or the, the commercial industrial way, but if you live in La Bota, you can't get out in peak hours. You know, so if this has, if this project has ten years and before it was seventeen million, now it's five million and you're gonna wait two years more, we're late, we're late. We need to act, yes, we need to act now.
That's why, when I saw the forty-eight million dollars on streets, was just reduce it by five and put it in the Baezillos.
Put it in the Baezillos and do it this year, not in twenty twenty-three.
Well, but the, just to clarify, the forty-eight million dollars are not forty-eight million dollars from the city, there's several funding sources.
Alright, so how much funding is from the Central Laredo?
So how many local funds?
It will be very minimal, uh, like of those forty, forty-eight million, like right now, I can identify twenty-two million dollars worth of construction.
A what?
Twenty-two million dollar worth of construction, uh, from TX dot for the H R Parkway. So, so out of the forty-eight, just take out four, twenty-two million dollars.
If you're twenty-six lead.
Twenty-six, four million dollars for uh, for the uh, street re, uh.
Reconstruction.
Reconstruction, yeah. You have uh, fourteen million dollars for the Springfield Avenue extension. Which is uh, we have eight unfunded here and uh, one million from utilities fund. So there's several, several, several sources.
Funding sources.
Springfield tiene sentido, porque ya está las escuelas, se hace tráfico, tiene sentido esa calle, pero las otras dos ya no nos hacen sentido que pongas dinero ahí.
Sino Carlton.
Y hay una Siri Council que vive en La Bota que te lo va a agradecer mucho si lo puedes mover a Baezillos.
Sí claro.
How much money in the C I P, if any, is being proposed to go out for bonds?
To go out for bonds, uh, fifteen million dollars, one five.
One five?
Yes.
So, what is the capacity the city has to issue bonds, how much can you issue?
One five.
So you're at max?
One five, you're max.
Yes.
Fifteen, that's it?
Yeah.
And.
We, we, we make a.
What, what is your current bonded indebtedness?
Uh, it will be.
Under general fund?
Under general fund. Nine hundred um. Nine, nine twenty-three, nine hundred and twenty-three.
Nine hundred and twenty-three million?
Yeah. Tax support.
Does, does utility still contribute uh, funding sources back to uh, street reconstruction?
Yes.
How much is that?
Uh, I don't have the, the amount here, but they do, like for instance, on this uh, Springfield Avenue and this bond right here, they have one million dollars set aside for street reconstructions.
And you're still using C D V G funds to do
Yes.
all of the areas of town where you do new street or reconstruction of streets?
Yeah.
Primarily in some.
They can, they put a hundred and fifty thousand each year for, for districts.
Is, is anything in District Eight or District Seven
Yeah, there should be.
C D V G monies?
There should be, the only one that does not qualify will be District.
District Six?
District Six, yes.
We should find a forum. Like, it's been there for a long time and it's impossible that we're the number one inland port and we can focus a little bit more on that area.
Let me ask you this, on the H R Ruthinger, you said you had how much money for this particular budget year?
H R Parkway, I have.
Twenty-three or what did you say, twenty-six?
Twenty-two million dollars here on the, from TX dot.
From Tex- Doc?
Yes.
What's the total project cost?
It's like twenty-five or something, no? It was like three million dollars or five million dollars.
Well, they, I mean, now we're looking at.
Or, or do one or do another, but do something so they could flow.
Right.
Yeah, and uh, do you have a total project cost for?
Was the county gonna contribute money to, to uh, one of the, to the.
I think so, uh.
How much did they contribute?
Oh, I don't remember, I, I don't remember.
I recall.
They've already contributed?
No, I mean, there was an agreement, I think there was an agreement.
There was an agreement, I remember.
Where, it's a three-party agreement, the county, the R M A.
County, R M A and uh, and TX dot.
So, so we don't know for sure what funding, if anything, comes from what sources?
It should be in the agreement and a, and the, the N P O would have, um, if it's gonna go to lead within the next four years, it'll be in the Transportation Improvement Program and it'll show all the funding sources.
I, I think the Transportation Improvement Program that I got shows it uh, still needing money.
It, it still.
On both roads. And I wanna say that the, the roads funding, the money that was missing was the local funds. Not the state or federal funds.
I just don't remember. Let me see if I can find it.
Fifty, fifty percent from the Webb County.
How much?
Uh, participating for funding, twenty-three million dollars, uh, zip loan, fifty percent C W Laredo and fifty percent Webb County.
Andy, for record, uh, if I'm mistaken, uh, a char Ruthinger's gonna be, gonna be built by the state, it's gonna be an uns, uns, system highway.
Okay.
So, they're working out the details of what highways the city is gonna take on, et cetera, et cetera, because they do exchanges like that now. So the city won't be participating in that construction, that's the way I understand it, could be wrong, but that's the way I understand it. The, originally, the city and the county had an agreement to do the environmental, which the county took the lead on.
Yes, yes, yes.
And there was two pieces and from Mines Road up to a certain, I forgot the. And then from Mines Road up to a certain, I forgot the, what landowner it was, that was the city's portion and then the other was.
Ruthinger.
Yeah, but it's gonna be an on-system highway now and the Texas will be doing the construction.
So then.
And then we still have, so we, we do have fun.
The city was gonna participate like ten million dollars or so?
Yeah.
Okay, so they, they won't be doing that anymore.
Yeah, no.
So it's a totally Techstar-funded project, but yet Techstar has already allocated their funds for twenty-two. So it would have to go in the next funding cycle for them to be able to make the road over.
That's the way I understand it, if I have it wrong.
No, because I remember that, I don't remember who's the. The engineer that gave us a presentation here.
Probably Tito Gonzalez?
Tito, Tito Gonzalez, and he's, and I asked him directly, he says. The earliest that Techstar would be able to fund these projects is like twenty-three, because the twenty-two monies are already committed. That's what he told us at, at this commission. And, but, okay, let me ask you a quick question, Dan, before you leave, uh, maybe you can help. The state is short of money there to complete the, the project, which is gonna be a state, you know, funded project. Is there any way the city could say, hey, uh, our portion was ten million, let's renegotiate this and up it by the, whatever we're short? To make sure that this road, this, in other words, this project won't get started until it's fully funded.
Well, Techstar has their money by years, okay, so they have a program for that. But it's only programmed to be, uh, don't get me wrong, it's not the full freeway section that we want, it's gonna be kinda like Mines Road.
Like Bob Bullard did at the beginning.
It's at grade, you know, they're gonna do the, the frontage roads.
Yeah.
And so where it connects to Mines Road, we're gonna look at traffic signal where it connects, it's not gonna be a bridge there. That's planned for, but it won't be until later.
And that's for a char Ruthinger?
Yeah, and there's, and on, on the I thirty-five side, they do have plans, they've committed, and I'm sure there's a year that they already have on that. To do an, uh, an interchange at thirty-five and then hopefully connect all that area, it's to the south with the majestic development, all that. That's the, that's the big plan.
That's north, north of, uh.
It's like a mile and a half.
Unravel Royal, it's about a mile and a half north.
Mile and a half north, yes.
And, and that's supposed to create the, the big interchange north of town for the traffic that is now moving in that direction.
They, they had a huge interchange planned at their Unravel Royal, like a hundred and ten million dollar one.
And it's now going.
And then they were convinced to do that still, but save some of that forty million dollars or so and move that over to that other project. That's the last I heard.
Yeah, there, there is, uh, there, I, it, I think it's called the UTC or something, whatever it is that they, uh, just came out and. And they're showing that it's being funded.
Yes.
And so that it's gonna be.
I understand it is.
It's gonna be led this year.
I, I don't know the schedule.
It's coming here. Okay, thank you, all right.
If you still want those numbers, I was able to find, um, the tip, uh, online here. And it is broken up into two projects. The, uh, char Ruthinger described as from fourteen seventy-two to point one miles east of Beltway. It's got a total construction cost, of course, this is with preliminary engineering right away, all of that, thirty-three. But construction is twenty-eight million five, twenty-five hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred. It is, it has, looks like category seven funds. Um, looks like that is metro mobility, that's twenty-six million of CAT seven funds. With the matching funds of one point seven local. Um, the other project, it is the five-lane highway with two-lane frontage roads. And that's, uh, from point one miles east of Beltway to IH thirty-five frontage road. And that has total construction cost of twenty-one million four hundred and forty thousand. And that is also CAT seven funds. Seventeen million of CAT seven funds with four point two eight eight of local.
Yeah, that's the one we just talked about that's up there.
So those are the, those are the two projects.
Okay, all right, okay. Moving on, on the, on the bond that you were asking me about, uh, one, one five million dollars that result. Uh, we have the, by district on the, yeah, each district gotta sign, uh, one million dollars for projects and, um, District One, we have, uh. Yeah, Independence Hill Park Improvements and, uh, Lomas del Sur Homeowners Park, uh.
Is there any way we could do away with this, uh, portion? Eight million dollars and channel it to the River Road?
Uh, that's about my pay, right, sir?
We're doing the Conseco Home Improvements? And we're doing?
Yeah, so, um.
Okay, okay, that, that takes care of fifteen million. What is the other than, aside from the eight million, uh, out of the fifteen, what are the other seven million for?
Uh, yes, sir, we will, oh. It was mainly done for, uh, for projects for, uh, turning lanes, traffic signals, uh, whole bunch of projects, uh.
Is there any money in there for street overlays?
For street overlay?
How many streets are proposed to be overlaid? Can you see the V G monies for that?
How much, eight million?
Eight million for overlay?
Oh, for street.
You can do C D B G for overlays?
They got a hundred and thirty-nine million dollars of care.
For paving, oh, ten million dollars for paving.
Yeah, where is the cares money? How much money did the city get for cares?
That, that's what I was gonna say.
Forty, right now, forty-two million dollars.
And what is that being proposed?
But you're getting it in, you're getting it in payments, right?
Yeah, that, that was a first payment, forty-two million dollars.
So how much total was allocated to the city?
A hundred and ninety-seven.
That, that was allocated for the city, forty-two million dollars.
I understand. How much more was done for the city?
How much?
More.
What was the total allocation?
Eighty-four million dollars.
How much?
Eighty-four million dollars, the first payment, the first year was forty-two.
Fifty percent?
Yes.
And what can you use those monies for?
Uh.
Infrastructure.
Infrastructure, there's, uh, we, we haven't gotten the final guidelines from the, the Treasury Department, we're still waiting for that, but, uh. There are some guidelines for utilities, uh, clean water sources, uh, IT, cybersecurity, that's the only the guidelines that we know so far.
You can, you can, you can use it for loss revenues?
For loss of revenue, that is correct.
There is a percentage.
Yeah.
And a formula.
Is the forty-eight million incorporated into your budget right now, the city's budget?
Part of it, yes.
Part of the forty-eight million?
Yes.
So how much is left that is not incorporated?
Uh, how much is left that's, uh?
Well, yeah, because that's where I'm headed. I mean, if it can be used for infrastructure, you know, that's, we're trying to find, we're trying to figure out how can we fund the gaps that are missing? To make some of these things whole.
If, if there was a loss, if we can get through what we can, what, what a loss.
What, what was the loss for, for bridge revenues?
The loss for bridge revenue was ten million dollars.
Ten million dollars. How much of, uh, of that loss was attributed to the contribution to the city? Fifty percent?
Yeah, in general fund will be five, five million dollars, in general fund will be five million dollars.
Five million dollars.
Yes.
So you in fact could make up the lost revenue, uh, from the CARES Act. And make the bridge hold a ten million and then generate five million as a contribution back to the city.
Yeah.
For, for capital projects.
Uh, well, the, the formula doesn't work exactly that way, you have to combine everything all together, all the, all the city funds and.
I know how it works.
No, 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 no podemos disponer porque tendrías que ponerle responsable y contador a Daniel Azada. Y no va a querer firmar, ¿verdad?, pero bueno. Pero deberían de aceptar un poquito nuestras recomendaciones y revisar y ver qué, qué se puede todavía mover con flexibilidad, ¿no, Gilberto?
Sí, y hubo uno, un, un plan sugerido hace, en, en marzo, cuando todavía no, no sabíamos los, los, los lineamientos del. Del Departamento del Tesoro sugerimos, hubo unas sugerencias que, que la administración dio al, al, al Consilio y. Y se aprobó este, pero desafortunadamente todavía no tenemos un, un, este, los lineamientos del Departamento del Tesoro. Entre eso, por decirle, puedo decir que había diez millones para comprar equipo, para la, para los departamentos de la ciudad que, que, pues, digo ustedes. Tienen muchas necesidades, ¿verdad?, los, el Departamento de Obras Públicas, bomberos, policías, todos tienen muchas necesidades.
Ya, ya vimos los parques, se fueron al cielo.
Había, habíamos puesto, este, si mal no recuerdo, diez millones.
Yo me acuerdo que dar en diez, cuando veinte nos, nos asombramos y ahorita vamos en cuarenta y dos, ¿no?
Algo así, entonces, pues, ese dinero está, está destinado a eso, pero. Como no, no tenemos los lineamientos, no es, los fondos no se han, no se han liberado para gastarlo en eso, entonces estamos esperando los. Los, los lineamientos finales para poder, para poder comprarlo, asignarlo, comprar el equipo y todo eso. Ya cuando tengamos eso, pues, tal vez no, no podamos hacer eso, entonces, pues vamos a tener que reasignarlo y pues con. De tener que ir a, a, al Consilio otra vez porque fue una votación del Consilio, entonces tenemos, tenemos que hacer eso porque. Porque tenemos esa, esa dirección de ellos, entonces.
So, so you physically have received the money.
Yes, it's sitting on a bank.
But you have not received full instructions on how that money can be used.
Correct, we have, uh, we have some guidelines on, on utilities, on the revenue laws, on.
Clean water.
Yes, and some.
Lead pipe replacement.
Yeah, there are some questions that we have, we, we were asking, okay, can we use it on, uh, on payroll for police and fire? But they haven't clearly say yes. So if they say yes, well, maybe we can just go ahead.
You're, you're saying if, if that, uh, salary was expended, uh, as part of the pandemic and. And, and it becomes a reimbursement process to the governmental entity.
They just release a, uh, statements, a statement saying that, okay, if you, if you, uh. If you claim a reimbursement and it was not, not an allowable expense, then you can, you can, uh, you can submit a, another reimbursable thing. Or you can supplant or something.
You can supplant it.
Yeah, saying that, okay, people are gonna make mistakes, saying that, they don't even know what they're gonna.
Correct, I understand.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I, 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 I think the, uh, as Mr. Duñez said earlier, I think the, the consensus on, uh. The commission, uh, and, and, and obviously the direction you take is coming from council, not, not from us. But that there is a concern that, uh, mobility in particular related to trade. Uh, is, is somehow being left behind.
Yes.
And that there should be a. Re-effort, uh, to look for local funds, uh, to make at least one of the projects whole. Uh, hopefully, ISU is, is the one closer in than the one most affecting traffic and. Uh, I, I think that you need to express to council what the concern is, you don't, you don't have to take blame for it. You, you just need to designate that the commission as a whole, uh, is, is basically asking. If there's any way to be able to look at all the sources of funding that the city has. And to see if there's any way where we can come up with the necessary funds, local funds, uh, from those sources. Uh, to complete the funding for ISU. And, and, and try to move forward with that project in this particular year and, and not have to wait.
Two years?
Till twenty-three or twenty-four.
Okay, and, and, and we'll do and I'll, I'll make sure to express your concerns and, uh, and I'll see.
And then it's up to us to talk to the councilmen ourselves.
Ourselves, yeah.
And, and kind of express that concern as well.
Yeah, sure, and I'll, I'll make sure to have, tell management your concerns and, uh. We'll make all our efforts to make sure that it, it happens because I'm well aware that council member. And management know that it's, it's one of the priorities to take care of the.
And hopefully, the infrastructure bill passes, there's an earmark for that as well, so, but we won't know that for a while.
Yes. So, well, that's basically it on the capital improvement program.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your presentation, thank you very much, all right.
Thank you.
Regarding Viva.
Now we have a discussion of possible action regarding the Viva Laredo. Comprehensive plan?
I think we all have a special.
Who is that?
So, uh. So every year, the, the comprehensive plan has to be presented to P N Z for, for approval. Um, we're bringing it to you, uh, today, there have been no changes to the comprehensive plan. Uh, it's, it's coming to you with no changes, just to present the comprehensive plan as charter requests.
Well, we did make changes to it last year, because we changed land uses.
Well, okay.
In certain areas.
Yes. But for this year, we approved.
Sí.
Yeah.
Oh, what's for this year?
So, I mean, we did, we did change some land uses, where we went from, I forget if it was high-density residential to commercial.
En Viva, en Viva Laredo, yes?
That's, yeah, I mean, here at this commission level, we approve different projects that were not. As per the comprehensive plan, we did approve projects that changed the use on the comprehensive plan.
But we're not making changes at this presentation to you.
So you're saying that those are incorporated in? Yeah, there you go, that's it, they're incorporated in, okay. So you're record, you're saying that there will be no changes for the future land use plan? Okay, all right, that's good, we're good with that. All right.
Can we get a copy of that, or can I get a copy of it, because I wasn't here.
Don't lie.
I'll remember that.
All right, motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, thank you all very much.